All forward.
Oh, aye.
All right, good morning, everybody. Today is Tuesday, the 12th of November. Everybody had a good Veterans Day yesterday. George, I was fixing to call you and wish you happy Veterans Day, and then I got sidetracked, but happy Veterans Day, George. We appreciate your veteran status.
Thank you, I'm just hanging out anyway.
Oh, good. I'm gonna start our meeting off today. We've asked George Coulson, our emergency manager, if he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And Wade Adams, our fleet manager, if he would lead us in prayer this morning. We'll start with that.
Repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our kind, loving heavenly Father, we come before thee this day with gratitude in our hearts. We are very grateful, Father, for the many blessings that thou gives us to us daily. And we're grateful for this great country that we live in, Father, and grateful for those who so willingly serve this community and to service of others. And we all see this day that as we go forth, we may have our hearts and minds open, that we may be able to come together as a community and as a country, and that our good works will show and go forth. And we pray that we may be able to do what's best for our county and for those that live in it. And we love thee and pray for thy guidance and do so, and ask these things in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. All right, we have got minutes for October 14th, John?
Yeah. And I'm excused, so I'll let you guys do those?
Like, I feel like we were by ourselves. A motion for, uh, it's October 14th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for October 14th.
I will second that. It's moved in second and all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. And then we've got claims for payment from October 28th to November 11th.
I'd move for approval of claims from payments from October 28th, 2024, to November 11th, 2024.
Second.
Moved in second and all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Those are approved. I'd like to welcome John to the stand for a department report from the clerk's office.
Okay, I'll be quick. We have extra reports today, so I'll go quickly. But first, we just had the election last week. I really appreciate George. We, George and I became good friends. We spent a lot of time, not that we weren't before.
You know?
George, George helped me empty the ballot boxes. I really appreciate. We met with George and law enforcement well ahead of the election. We talked about security practices and measures that we would take. And we had a few incidents, none that I could corroborate or certainly none that we could convict on, but I had three different reports of voter intimidation at the Cedar City ballot box. People yelling at other people that you're, if you put that in there, it's not gonna count. And that was combined with some of the fires that happened along the west coast. And so
It'd be more appropriate to do that at the post office.
I will say, uh, the post office, the post office have been great partners. I really wanted to express my appreciation.
Sorry, sorry, post office.
You gave me a good segue.
Too soon?
Maybe. Anyway, one of the things that we noticed is that the ballots that came in from Cedar had a ball stamp and not the Vegas stamp. So they were coming directly to us and getting stamps.
Nice, nice.
We appreciate that. Yeah, we had multiple meetings with them, and I really appreciate their being proactive.
Take back everything I said then.
Yes, thank you, thank you, US Postal.
Well, and they really, they, they, they're very proactive, especially on big election years, but all elections. They reach out to all the clerks and the, either the Secretaries of State or Lieutenant Governors offices and, you know, try to, try to prepare. And so we really appreciate them this time, and I'll have some better numbers when we do the canvas on the 18th. But because of the voter intimidation and the fires, one of the things that we did is we, George and I pretty much just drove all week. Our, our solutions were more surveillance of the boxes by law enforcement and more frequent pickups. So often, we would do more than once a day on the big ones.
They put it pretty full?
Yeah, oh yeah. I mean, we had like an 85% turnout and most people dropped, yeah. And so it was
Most people didn't drop?
Yeah.
In the boxes, good.
Was it that much, the last presidential?
It was closer to 90% the last one. Yeah, it was down just a little bit. But I mean, anything above 85%, you're doing pretty good.
Yeah, that's, that's wild.
Phenomenal.
Yeah, so good, good turnout, and we had, we had long lines on Election Day, but that was not for registered voters, but for the provisional line, for, so for folks who were moving, who had moved or needed to register for the first time, Utah allows the same day registration. And I really appreciate, I shouldn't even start because I'll miss people, but, but we had, well, my wife went, and we had August, and Melanie went, and, oh shoot. Wade went, yes. And what was that guy's name? And then two gals from the Census Office whose names I can't, Exilda went and Latonya went. And we really appreciate that. So we worked through the lines. We actually ended up having to sit on the results for a while, election night, because we were ahead of the other counties. There was, Utah County had some really bad lines, and we couldn't, you can't release results until everybody's done voting. And so whether state, statewide, and national races, then, then, you know, we had to, we actually ended up sitting on results. And then, it was funny, you have to be careful what you pray for. I prayed that we would, things would work out, and that we could overcome the technical challenges. And boy, we have technical challenges, but we got through them, and everything worked out great. Our, our team is amazing. I'm really grateful for everyone, the, my full-time deputies and my many poll workers. And I, anyway, everybody just stepped right up. It went, it went as smoothly as possible. We, we
Sorry, John, we're listening to you.
It's okay.
Oh, there's, there's some other side business going on.
I can see. I'm easily distracted.
Oh, keep talking, we're listening.
So we, we busted, we busted our tells on Saturday, and we had everything that we, we, every ballot that we had was received and tabulated by Saturday night. And we came in Sunday to do some adjudication and realized our images weren't good. And so there was a little bit of an issue with our scanner. They were going through, but not good enough for us to be able to do the adjudication and things. So we actually, we had a spare scanner coming from Flagstaff and a technician coming from Moab. And we got, we got that thing fixed, but we started over on scanning on Monday afternoon. So we didn't sleep a lot, but, but it really, it turned out fine. This, with elections like this, there's a lot more adjudication. If you think about, like, a municipal election, there's like two, two races, right? But on a, on a race like this, there's like 20. And so there's lots of, you know, it's slow. So anyways, that's all. Have any questions for me?
No, but stay there.
I, I did hear about some people that said, holy cow, we had the auditors, we had all of these different people, and they was really impressed.
Yeah, we had, at one point, I think we had 13 people helping with provisionals. And so
That's amazing.
Yeah, I, you know
Thanks to all of them too.
That's exactly it. They, everybody was so willing to step up, and we really appreciate that, so. But I'm taking too long here, Mike.
No, you're not.
Okay.
Hold on, I'm coming down there.
I'm getting uncomfortable at this point.
You should be.
You should be.
As well, you should.
As, as well. Oh, nothing. Oh, nothing. You gonna give him a hug?
Well, yeah, eventually.
Okay.
No, I, I would like to, there was a, there was an incident that I'd like to report about during the course of the election. During the course of the balloting. First of all, I'd like to just present a certificate to John. This is just a certificate of appreciation for proving that sometimes the bravest heroes are those who answer the call, PPE or not. Thank you for your quick thinking, compassionate response, and unwavering commitment to the people you serve.
Well, thank you.
But, so, this is kind of an award that I asked Jen to put together. And there's an award citation that goes along with that. For going above and beyond the line, in the line of, well, obtaining ballots. On this fateful day, John Whitaker embarked on a seemingly ordinary task, collecting ballots from Burl. Little did he know that his journey would turn into an unexpected act of bravery and community spirit. Upon discovering a medical emergency, John immediately jumped into action, assisting a citizen in need. Demonstrating extraordinary composure, he helped ensure the citizen had a safe ambulance transport to the hospital. But wait, there's more. Not only did John respond to the emergency without hesitation, but he did so without any personal protective equipment. As it turned out, without even realizing, he might have needed it as part of his daily tasks. In true heroic fashion, he dove into the situation with nothing more than a ballot bag and a good heart. John's willingness to drop everything and lend a helping hand reminds us all that even the most routine tasks can lead to active, acts of heroism. His courage, compassion, and readiness to serve despite lacking PPE or even the knowledge he should have had, set a new standard for above and beyond in public service. Who knew ballot runs could be so heroic? George, I need you to come up here as well. So, what happened, when George and John were in the process of collecting ballots from the Burl box, when they drove out, and tell me if I get this wrong, but as they drove out, there was an ambulance parked in front of a house, lights were flashing, doors were open, and nobody seemed to be around. They went and collected the ballots, went in and visited, and found two paramedics that were exhausted from trying to lift a person up off the floor, that, and, and get them to medical help. They were able to get the person into the ambulance. Shortly after they got this person into the ambulance, they went into cardiac arrest. And the paramedic, it, tongue-in-cheek a little bit, but truly saved that woman's life. And got her to the hospital, and, you know, that, it would have been a really bad outcome had they not stopped and helped, had George not recognized the emergency, and John not be willing to jump right in. I said, you, I, when they talked about, I said, you had gloves, right?
No.
George was like, we didn't have time for gloves. So
We got to Enik, and we said, can we use your bathroom?
We get, can we give him a hand?
Absolutely. They deserve a big hand. Well
Good job, guys.
Good job, guys.
The sweetest part of that was, Mike went in afterwards and talked to the paramedic, Ty, and said, oh yeah, she, she made it. Because when, by the time we, from the front door to the ambulance, her whole socks went way down, and I thought she was gone.
Your, your, your neighbor Fred Rowley, you know, he told me about gloves, John.
Afraid to know what Fred said about gloves.
The only thing you can do with gloves on is pee your pants, so.
Yeah, no, all these guys, I mean, just, I mean, you throw that on top of honestly the heroic effort to make sure that we had an honest and fair election. You know, John spent hours getting those boxes installed with help from, from charity and, and some others. And then to, you know, check those boxes. That, that's a pretty good road trip if you're going from Burl to Canaraville to Cedar, to Enik, to Parowan, to Bryanhead several times a day.
Say that they, that was very convenient to have those boxes.
Well, thank you very much. You guys should be proud of yourselves. It was awesome. Great effort.
Looks like we got George here.
Yeah, George, you're, Wade, I don't know how you're gonna follow up with that, but when you get to your part.
Well, and I really need to have less credit than John because that wasn't my first rodeo. But that was, that was John's first rodeo.
It was a large patient too, and so that was, that was the real challenge, is those guys were so gassed.
Oh, yeah.
When we got there. And they have a little chair thing you have to get them on because the door was narrow. And then there was another deputy that came, and he, he kinda got both hands, and we were able to get her onto the gurney. But yeah, she, she was crashing just on the, from the gurney to the
Her oxygen, but from the, we got her off of the floor and onto the, onto the, the gurney, because we had no gloves. I didn't wait for gloves.
Ew.
I pointed out after the fact that there's a great big ambulance out there that's got lots of gloves in it.
Well, I had gloves, I, you know, I had my vest on, and I had my, I had my eye fat, and I had gloves in my eye fat, but it was just like, we walked in, I saw those two poor medics, and one was leaning up against the counter and was just obviously beat. And the other one was kind of half slouched on the floor, and it was like, oh, you could tell
Went, yes. And what was that guy's name? And then two gals from the assessors office whose names I can't, Exilda went and Latonya went. Um, and we really appreciate that. So we worked through the lines. Um, we actually ended up having to sit on our results for a while, uh, election night because, um, we were ahead of the other counties. Um, there was Utah county had some really bad lines. And we couldn't, you can't release results until everybody's done voting. Um, and so whether state, statewide and national races, then, um, then, uh, you know, we had to, we actually ended up sitting on results. And then, um, it was funny, uh, you have to be careful what you pray for. Um, I, I prayed that we would, uh, things would work out and that we could overcome the technical challenges. And boy, did we have a tech, technical challenges, but we got through them and everything worked out great. Um, our, our team is amazing. I'm really grateful for, um, everyone, uh, the, my full-time deputies and, uh, my many poll workers. And I, uh, anyway, everybody just stepped right up. It went, it went as smoothly as possible. We, we, uh,
Sorry, John, we're listening to you.
It's okay.
There's some other side business going on.
I can see. I'm easily distracted.
Oh, keep talking. We're listening.
So we, we busted, we busted our tells on Saturday and, uh, we had everything that we, we, every ballot that we had was received and tabulated by Saturday night. And we came in Sunday to do some adjudication and realized our images weren't good. And so there was a little bit of an issue with our scanner. They were going through, but not good enough for us to be able to do the adjudication and things. So we actually, we had, um, a, a spare scanner coming from flagstaff and a technician coming from Moab, um, and, uh, we got, we got that thing fixed, but we started over on scanning on Monday afternoon. So we didn't sleep a lot, but, uh, but, uh, it, it really, it turned out fine. Um, this, with elections like this, there's a lot more adjudication. If you think about like a municipal election, there's like two, two races, right? But on, uh, a, uh, on a race like this, there's like 20. And so there's lots of, uh, you know, it's slow. So anyways, that's all. Have any questions for me?
No, but stay there.
I,
What do you?
I did hear about some people that said, oh, holy cow, we had the auditors. We had all of these different people and they was really impressed.
Yeah, we had, at one point, I think we had 13 people helping with provisionals. And so.
That's amazing.
Yeah, I, I.
Thanks to all of them too.
That's exactly it. They, they, everybody was so willing to step up and we really appreciate that. So. But I'm taking too long here, Mike.
No, you're not.
Okay.
Hold on, I'm coming down there. I'll fix something.
Getting uncomfortable at this point.
Should be.
You should be.
Well, you should.
As, as well. Oh, nothing. Oh, nothing. You gonna give him a hug?
Well, yeah, eventually.
Okay.
No, I, I would like to, um, there was a, there was an incident that I'd like to report about, uh, during the course of the election. During the course of the balloting. First of all, I'd like to just present a certificate to John. This is just a certificate of appreciation. Um, for proving that sometimes the bravest heroes are those who answer the call, PPE or not. Thank you for your quick thinking, compassionate response and unwavering commitment to the people you serve.
Well, thank you.
But so this is kind of an award that I asked, uh, Jen to put together. And there's an award citation that goes along with that. For going above and beyond the line, in the line of, well, obtaining ballots. On this fateful day, John Whitaker embarked on a seemingly ordinary task, collecting ballots from Burl. Little did he know that his journey would turn into an unexpected act of bravery and community spirit. Upon discovering a medical emergency, John immediately jumped into action, assisting a citizen in need. Demonstrating extraordinary composure, he helped ensure the citizen had a safe ambulance transport to the hospital. But wait, there's more. Not only did John respond to the emergency without hesitation, but he did so without any personal protective equipment. As it turned out, without even realizing, he might have needed it as part of his daily tasks. In true heroic fashion, he dove into the situation with nothing more than a ballot bag and a good heart. John's willingness to drop everything and lend a helping hand reminds us all that even the most routine tasks can lead to act of her, acts of heroism. His courage, compassion and readiness to serve despite lacking PPE or even the knowledge he should have had, set a new standard for above and beyond in public service. Who knew ballot runs could be so heroic? George, I need you to come up here as well. So what happened? Uh, when George and John were in the process of collecting ballots from the Burl box, uh, when they drove out and tell me if I get this wrong, but as they drove out, there was an ambulance parked in front of a house, lights were flashing, doors were open, and nobody seemed to be around. They went and collected the ballots, uh, went in and visited and found two paramedics that were exhausted from trying to, uh, lift a person up off the floor, uh, that, and, and get them to medical help. Uh, they were able to get the person into the ambulance. Uh, shortly after they got this person into the ambulance, they went into cardiac arrest. Uh, and the paramedic, he, it, it tongue in cheek a little bit, but truly saved that woman's life. Uh, and got her to the hospital and, you know, that, it would have been a really bad outcome had they not stopped and helped, had George not recognized, uh, the emergency and John not be willing to jump right in. I said, you, I, I, when they talked about, I said, you had gloves, right? George was like, we didn't have time for gloves. So.
We got to Enik and we said, can we use your bathroom?
We get, can we give them a hand?
Absolutely. They deserve a big hand. Well.
Good job, guys.
Good job, guys.
The sweetest part of that was, uh, Mike went in afterwards and talked to the paramedic Ty and said, oh yeah, she, she made it. Cause when, by the time we, we, from the front door to the ambulance, her whole socks went way down and I thought she was gone.
Your, your, your neighbor Fred Rowley, you know, what he told me about gloves, John.
Afraid to know what Fred said about gloves.
The only thing you can do with gloves on is pee your pants. So.
Yeah, no, all these guys, I mean, just, I mean, you throw that on top of honestly, the heroic effort to make sure that we had an honest and fair election. Uh, you know, John spent hours, uh, getting those boxes installed with help from, from charity and, and some others. Uh, and then to, you know, check those boxes. That, that's a pretty good road trip. If you're going from Burl to Canaraville to Cedar, to Enik, to Parowan, to Bryanhead several times a day.
Say that they, that was very convenient to have those boxes.
Well, thank you very much. You guys should be proud of yourselves. It was awesome. Great effort. Um.
Looks like we got George here.
Yeah, George, you're, Wade, I don't know how you're gonna follow up with that, but when you get to your part.
Well, and I really need to have less credit than John because that wasn't my first rodeo. But that was, that was John's first rodeo.
It was a large patient too. And so that was, that was the real challenge is those guys were so gassed.
Oh, yeah.
When we got there. And they have a little chair thing you have to get them on because the door was narrow. And then there was another deputy that came and he, he kinda got both hands and we were able to get her onto the gurney. But yeah, she, she was crashing just on the, from the gurney to the.
Her oxygen, but it's from the, we got her off of the floor and onto the, uh, onto the, uh, the gurney, cause we had no gloves. I didn't wait for gloves.
Ew.
I pointed out after the fact that there's a great big ambulance out there. It's got lots of gloves in it.
Well, I had gloves, I, you know, I had my vest on and I had my, I had my eye fat and I had gloves in my eye fat, but it was just like, we walked in, I saw those two poor medics. And one was leaning up against the counter and was just obviously beat. And the other one was kind of half slouched on the floor and it was like, oh, you could tell that they had been working for at least all the time since I'd observed them till the time we.
Marilyn's got a meeting at one.
I've got a meeting at one over in Cedar.
We're gonna make this as painless as possible.
And then I need, I need somebody to be here at two for, for the, uh, the post-election. Can you do that?
Yeah, I'll be here. It's all, yeah. In fact, I'll, uh, yeah, I'll still be in town at two.
Okay. Wait, it's, it's a different process than you're used to? They, they changed it up on us, but it'll be less computer and more hands-on.
Okay. No, I, I've, I'll be here anyway.
Oh, yeah. That's that one that's been in the works for a minute?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll just give a recap and kind of where we are. And remember we had to move that forward and advertise for two weeks, which we've done.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. All right, we're, uh, we're way behind where we said we were going to be, but we had stuff, we actually did stuff in the break. So.
We, we got some things done.
We got some other things done. So we're gonna move, move ahead with our 10 o'clock, uh, our 10 o'clock calendar. Uh, number one is a public hearing. This got a public hearing, discussion, possible approval of proposed general plan amendment. A tier change, tier two to tier four for properties currently in the Canaraville tier two urban expansion area. Uh, the description, legal description is in the agenda. And welcome Reed Erickson to the podium.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
On yours, Mike, I marked off a couple of sections. I had a duplicate on the, on the, uh, I had section 34, 33, 34, twice on there. And so I, uh,
And two public hearings.
Two public hearings too.
We do have two public hearings.
Oh, we do?
Uh, there is one for the, the tier change and one for the zone change. And since they require separate actions, I thought it'd be good to have separate public hearings.
No, no, at the very number one.
Yeah.
Verbi says, public hearings, public hearings.
That's fine.
We're, we're.
You're good.
Well, I looked that over close, didn't I?
Well, I missed it too.
That adequately.
That's why I hesitated. I was reading it. I'm like, public.
All kinds of errors.
We're just gonna have one. We'll have one for one and one for two. It'll be fine.
Well, since it looks like there's a lot of public here for this item, uh, I'll.
We'll expect Blaine to have a whole lot to say on these issues.
Historical review and dog and pony show that you've had before since no one here cares. So we'll just jump ahead.
We were lucky that there was snow today.
Well, and the fact that this is the second public hearing that we've held on this item. A month ago, we held this and the planning commission has held two public hearings on this. And so I think we've answered everyone's questions and I don't think that there's an issue. So uh, rather than review all of what we're doing, let me just run to the map. Um, that summarizes in the end, the map on the left is what we currently have. The, the red dashed line is the tier two. And it runs all the way from Bumblebee Springs Road clear down to the county line on I-15 and then the public lands along the east side.
And so why is Chex Shoney red?
Why is Chex Shoney there?
It was red?
Red.
They're zoned R1. This is the zoning map. Uh, the general, and the general plan map. So we're just looking at, uh, as it is, we're not talking about the zoning right now. We're just doing the tier boundary. So we're making one smaller tier, uh, up on the, up on here. We're, rather than running it all the way down like we did before, we're stopping it right here uh, for the tier two and then just having a small tier two for what Chex Shoney Cliffs is. But we're doing away with all of this other property that was in the tier two before.
So did Canaraville change or probably create their annexation declaration boundary?
Uh, they're working on it.
Okay, but it will, it will be this?
No.
No.
It will be smaller than this.
Okay, so our tier two actually is gonna go beyond their.
It's a little bigger than what the, the, uh, annexation policy plan will be.
Okay, okay.
Yep. Well, I'm gonna jump ahead of the public hearing just because what we're talking about here is this language is outlined in red. This was in 2005, part of our general plan amendment. Says the county will initiate and consider proposals for the reclassification of tier four of land within existing tier two boundary that does not evidence the above characteristics. Whereas it, a number one and number two there, it doesn't have central services. It's not, there are not subdivisions. They're not all urban levels of density previously approved by the county. Uh, and so this has been an ongoing desire to do some of these changes since 2005, when we made these general plan amendments as to consider these, these boundary changes. So. Anyway, uh, that's what we're doing. We've talked about it quite a bit and unless you have any questions, we can have public hearing.
All right. Cheryl declare the public hearing open on agenda item number one. Comment, question? Cheryl declare the public hearing closed on agenda item number one?
Okay, again, the review criteria is that this is something that we want to initiate and, and try to bring into conformance with the goals and policies of the tier two area. We had a bunch of tier two that really belonged to in tier four, and that's why we're making those changes.
Right. All right. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the, uh, the proposed general plan amendment, tier change tier two to tier four for, for properties currently in the Canaraville tier two urban expansion area. And, and properties generally located within the sections listed on the agenda. Um, and, uh, we, we saw this in, in, in our planning commission and it.
Did you want to correct those sections?
As, as we've mentioned earlier.
They're just in the, yeah.
Is that good?
Uh, yeah, I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, the next step is the tier, the, the zoning change then. Now that we've amended the tier boundary, we're looking at just the two areas that we would do zone changes uh, in the, in the new tier two, uh, smaller area. And then down around Chex Shoney Cliffs. So if you look at the existing, um, lands, this, I, I think I skipped past this time, but everything on the east side is all public lands. You got, uh, state trust lands in the blue, Zion National Park in the gold, in the buff color is BLM. And so you've got, you know, all federal jurisdiction and state jurisdiction on that side. So this is what the, the zoning, uh, previously looked like. And this is what we're looking at going to this, uh, so on the left is in nineteen, as mentioned previously, in 1980, when we first got zoning in the county, they just went around each municipality, followed the section lines and just blocked in a large block of R1 or R1 half. And so it really isn't appropriate for the land uses and and all of the things that's happened since with relation to septic take density studies and everything. So now we're proposing on the right to go with the gold, uh, to R5 and the pink to R820. And so all of the, the, uh, there's just a little bit of A20 left over there on the bottom side and against the mountain uh, that are, um, sections that have been traded out and are next to BLM there. So.
Reed, on the septic take density, was in this area, was it a, a 10 acre density? Is that what they recommended or required?
10 acre. Uh, they recommended 16 acre. Um, and, and I had a bunch of those slides here. I can just show here. If you look at this graph, they, they recommended that when you have a one milligram per liter degradation of nitrate from 1.5 to 2.5 and it, and you just take that graph right here was, is where that is. And, and take that right up, that's 16.1 acres per septic. Okay, we said, look, we're gonna look at this a little differently. We're gonna allow a, a two milligram per liter nitrate degradation because we're allowing it to go to 3.5 in all our other areas. And so if we do that here and extrapolate the same kinds of information based on the groundwater flow, uh, it comes out here to, uh, allowing, uh, 425 septics at 12.1 acres. So we just rounded it down to 10.
But once those community municipalities.
Get on central sewer, they could go to R1 half or 10 acres, 10,000 square foot lots. It changed the whole nature of everything down there.
And for your math here, I mean, the 10, uh, micrograms per liter was the minimum or the maximum allowable, right?
And so that's, that's the, the DEQ threshold at which they will close it off and no one can use it.
That's the red line. And so we're well below that.
Yeah.
Even with our projections.
That's why we would say, they recommended one milligram degradation. We're saying we can go to 3.5. And that's what it allows us. So that was, uh, an effort that was extensively done last year. Or yeah, about a year and a half ago in the spring of 2023. So we're just following up with these zone changes and trying to get everything in line.
Wasn't it because this was rockier or something? Wasn't it because this was rockier or something that the?
They have less groundwater, uh, available for mixing.
Basin is small, right? To the, the, the basin is quite small.
Yeah, it, it doesn't spread out over, over a larger area and it's a lot more confined water table. And, um, there are already a number of lots in there, uh, more than what septics can actually, we can handle, so. So anyway, uh, that's, uh, so now we're just trying to make it zoning so that it's more appropriate for the lot sizes and.
Talked, I have a question. We talked a little bit about, because we only have the five acre and then it goes up to the twenty acre. You talked about doing a ten acre. Is that ever something that?
Yeah, we debated that a long time and creating a ten acre zoning and didn't really feel like we gained anything there. Uh, having the R five still provides the same opportunities, uh, because that's a minimum lot size.
So they can go bigger.
They can go, they'll have to go bigger because they'll have to be ten acres.
Ten acres.
But we also, working with Southwest Public Health and DEQ, recognize that there are technologies available in, in, uh, individual septic system treatments that allow pre-treatment of nitrates to reduce it by fifty percent. And Ash Creek, uh, and Washington County and other areas around us and, and Five County have, have done that. And if somebody wants to use one of these technologies and reduce their nitrate from their septic system by half, then they could reduce their acreage by half. And so we thought they could have five acre and a five acre zoning really is more appropriate. The setbacks are the same in R five as they are in A twenty. I don't know where we would go with a ten and what other uses we would allow there that we don't have in, in five. And so we just didn't feel like we really gained anything by creating a ten acre zoning.
Okay, that makes sense.
Because our tiers are still, you have to be in a tier two to go less than twenty acres. So we'd only use it in tier two and that's around the municipalities and R five works.
Well, the reason this is important is, I, as I remembered talking about it, in Enix, there's a well that they choose, use for.
Two wells.
Two wells, municipal wells. They had to shut down forever because the nitrates were too high.
I was in that subdivision. It was a cottonwood subdivision.
Spanish trails for me.
What's interesting about that is that.
I thought it was just one well, but it's two, huh?
There's two wells that they've shut down and, and it's interesting because they weren't near as bad when, when, uh, Enix City took people off those well, or got, excuse me, took them off septic and got central sewer and hooked people onto sewer. Those wells really weren't too bad. But then over time, they've just gotten worse because the groundwater from all those septic just continued to move into the groundwater. And now it's, I, I don't remember exactly, but it's like three times worse now than it was twenty years ago when they, uh, uh, cause that just continues to move. You, you can't clean it up. I mean, you're not, once you.
No way.
Once you've saturated your ground with septic and, and you've risen your nitrate levels, you, you don't clean it up, you know? So that's why we wanna use caution here and try to still give opportunity for as many people as we can, you know, to develop, but the long-term goal is sewer, central sewer, and that's the only way we can get there. And, and that's why the county really needs to consider creating a sewer district where there's somebody that can really work on that and focus on that and get grants and do studies and.
Just like the ground, the water.
Just like the Water Conservancy District did thirty years ago. You know, that's where we're at right now with sewer. We just need to take those next steps, so. Anyway, that, uh, if we can have public hearing.
Yep, Chair declares public hearing open on agenda item number two. Seeing no comments, I will close the public hearing and turn the time back over to Reed.
Okay, we've reviewed all the zoning criteria and the uses that are allowed in that zone and uh, that seems appropriate. The planning commission made recommendation to rezone the property as prescribed for R five and, uh, and R eight twenty for the, and read, and get rid of all of the R one, so.
Okay.
That's where we're at.
Call for motion?
I would move for approval of the proposed zone change, R one, R two and A twenty-two, R five, R eight twenty and A twenty for properties currently in Canaraville tier two urban expansion area. And the property, uh, locations are all outlined in the agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Just make mention really quick that we will continue to work with, um, Canaraville in a situation that, that we have, uh, regarding, you know, the arbitrariness of annexation sometimes like they used to do in the past, or they would just follow a section line and instead of property lines. And so you can see that the yellow line is the, the, what we would expect the new Canaraville annexation policy plan to be that includes the properties that are part in the town and part out of the town. And so we've gone and I'm, I'm gonna meet with them next Thursday at their town board meeting and go over these specifically. I have met with the mayor and their clerks, uh, and gone over these, and they're in favor of moving forward with that. But it would require some annexation and some de-annexation for properties. And so we've identified and just going around the boundary really quick, just zooming in, this shows that the yellow is the property line, but right now the line between the red and the teal color are those properties that are split by the town boundary. And so the red ones would be de-annexed from the town and go into the county, and the blue or teal ones would go into the.
So they get two property notices?
Right now, they get two tax notices, uh, two, they're, they're in two taxing districts, and yet you can see that they were just one property, you know? These, you know, the ones that you can see right here, for example, these properties, th- this is their property line. You know, it goes just like this, and they, and they, you can see that they use it as one property, but that's two jurisdictions right now. So we're, so this was this three-step process. The tier change, the zone change, and then the municipality boundary adjustments, uh, trying to make it better for property owners there, knowing what, what they have. And a lot of the challenge was with Canaraville Town, too. Some of those places that are like out have a water connection. Part of them are in and part of them are out. The house is out. The part, part of the property is in. They had a water connection for stock at one time. They sort of used it for the house, but they're not in the town. And it's made it really complicated for other people who want a water connection that aren't in the town to say, well, my neighbor has one, you know, and it's because he's had one for a long time and he was not in the town, then he, and it just, we'll clean it up all the way around the border.
You missed George's, uh, report. Guess, guess who the median income is the highest in Iron County? Which town?
Which town?
Canaraville.
All retired people are.
Well, there's a couple of big business owners there.
You know, Reed, I appreciate this a lot. This, we had, we had trouble with the elections over the years with this because there's a couple of places where the annexation line goes through somebody's living room.
The house is split right on the property line. Do, or do they vote in the town or out of the town?
I got crossways with the mayor's father, the former mayor about that, so.
Yeah. Alred, yeah.
Well, and they're, they're really, I think, excited to get this done.
Yeah, it's gonna be an effort. It's gonna take some time, and we will help and coordinate where we can, but it's really on the town. We can initiate a de-annexation or an annexation, but we, we've tried to identify them and we'll work with them and, and try to clean that up as much as we can.
That'll be really good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, moving on to agenda item number three, public hearing or view the sale and disposal of certain property owned by Iron County uh, described as APN B dash one one zero three dash five dash nine. Uh, the legal description is provided in the agenda.
Okay, so I can speak to this. This is a, a, a follow-up item from our previous meeting. Um, there was the discussion in the, the closed meeting, um, regarding this. This was a parcel that, uh, we had listed. It was the pre, it had been our, uh, CJC building. Uh, the commission had decided to move forward with the first, for the full price offer that we received. Um, it was the best offer amongst those offers received. Um, since then, a few developments have happened. Um, the, the buyers needed to be able to have a bathroom to get a loan, and so I authorized them to go ahead and start working on that. They were, at their expense. They're, they're putting in a, enough of a bathroom to, to qualify, and then they'll, they'll make the, they'll make it, you know, the way they want it. But they needed something, uh, with the, with the bank because it had been set up as the CJC. Um, and then the only other thing is, uh, probably today, I, I will get the, uh, uh, get someone in there to clean the carpets for them, assuming, uh, I wanted to wait until after the commission made their decision this morning. Uh, but we'll, we'll go ahead and pay for carpet cleaning as a seller, so.
So this money's that comes from the CJC will go back into the CJC, our new CJC.
Yeah. I believe this was, this was earmarked for the, the, to offset the parking lot of the new one. Is that correct?
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, that's a good.
Okay, I'll, you ready?
Yeah.
I'll move, uh, to sell and dispose of the property owned by Iron County, described as APN B dash eleven oh three dash five dash nine, and the legal description is noted in the agenda.
Second?
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Done. Number four, public comment. Uh, three-minute time limit per speaker for public comment. Participants should not repeat others' comments only for items not on the agenda. No items related to the commission's role as an appeal board. Comments should be directed to the commission with no attacks on other people's characters. We have any public comments today? Seeing none. Uh, for agenda items number five through nine, I will step out of our role as the Iron County Commission and convene as the Iron County Community Development and Renewal Agency. Go to agenda item number five. Um, I assume Adam Long is in lightness. Number five is the ICCD and RA Resolution twenty twenty-four dash three approving a participation agreement for the Granite Mountain Solar East Solar Community Development Project area.
And I will just jump in and suggest that, um, Adam will give an excellent explanation, but, uh, that, um, items five, six, and seven, we could probably just, I, I would suggest that we make separate motions on those because they're resolutions. Um, and then you're gonna have a little bit different on eight, a little bit different on nine.
Okay.
And I will be, I'll do my best to enlighten you here.
Perfect.
We have, we have four, what we're dealing with today are four existing solar projects, so Granite Mountain East and West, Enterprise and Iron Springs. Uh, these were created back twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen. The solar projects have been built. They've been in operation for,
Almost ten years.
Five or ten years. Um, so those have been successful projects. Clearway Energy has acquired those projects, and they are now proposing to add battery storage to them. Um, for Granite Mountain East and West and Enterprise, the battery storage is located within the existing project area. So if you recall, a project area is basically a, a line on, an area on a map. Um, the agency captures a portion of the tax increment from that area, and that's what's used to fund the, the incentives to make these projects happen. For those three projects, if we did nothing today, the extra value from these battery storage projects would get rolled up in the existing interlocal agreements. What we're proposing here is essentially, essentially splitting that, that tax increment stream the agency would get, so a portion of it goes toward the battery project specifically, and the other portion goes to the solar project, essentially how it has been happening. We are working under the existing interlocal agreements, so not asking, not suggesting more years or a higher percentage. This is just adding a significant amount of new capital investment to an existing project area. I'm happy to answer questions. Items five, six, and seven are participation agreements, so these are agreements very, very similar to the solar agreements, but with the, with a battery project entity, so a separate LLC that will own and pay taxes on the battery storage facilities.
Gotcha.
So then you would have, uh, through Nicole, you'd have reimbursement to the owner of the solar, and then the separate LLC is the owner of the battery?
Correct.
Is that right?
Yep.
Do the batteries solve the problem of, of the unbalanced grid? Like in the west, like West Desert with the Dixie Power where they said, hey, we can't really do more solar because it's, you know, does that help with that, even that out? Does that make sense?
Yeah, you're, I'm, I'm now speaking very clearly above my pay grade. But yeah, it helps with it, and really what the, what the battery, I think the biggest advantage of the battery storage is that it essentially allows, allows you to use that energy generated from the, from the solar facility um, in the, in the peak hours at night, so for, you know, five to nine, whatever those peak hours end up being, as opposed to the afternoon when power is, you know, on a wholesale level, very cheap because of all the solar that exists on the grid.
I see. So the higher rates would probably easily pay for the battery storage.
That's, that's the theory. Um, this is all, these are all Rocky Mountain Power's off-taker. I'm.
There must be some massive batteries to.
They are massive batteries and a massive amount of money going into batteries. Um, these, three of these projects are, um, you know, roughly a hundred million dollars in, in what expected taxable value sets net of a federal investment tax credit. Um, so these are a hundred and forty million dollar projects each. They look very similar to the solar projects, um, an enormous amount of capital investment, enormous amount of new taxable value that essentially just sits out in the desert and pays taxes and, you know, hopefully doesn't require anything in the way of government services or any real burden on anyone.
So as far as dollars and cents go, because it seemed like those projects, like an eighty megawatt project back in the day was running about a hundred and fifty million dollars or so to build. So each of these, each of these battery systems are about a hundred million dollars?
Uh, so there are, there are three that are eighty megawatts of storage for four hours and one is fifty megawatts.
Okay.
The, the eighty megawatt ones are roughly a hundred million dollars in, in taxable value that we expect.
And they depreciate on the same schedule as the panels?
Same schedule.
But their own schedule, right? It's not, they're not, they don't start with five years of depreciation?
Yeah, cor- correct. So they, they're on the same, the same depreciation schedule from the tax commission, but these are, you know, obviously starting at, at full value.
So very rough figures then. For each of these, you'd be looking at total tax of about a million dollars in, in personal property a year. And then with the old project area plans, you're looking at a seventy percent increment, which is to say the net tax increase for each of those would be about three hundred thousand dollars. Is that very, I mean, very ballpark, but is that in the neighborhood? Am I speaking correctly?
You're, yeah, so, so our rough projections, total tax increment for the first year is about two point six million dollars for all four projects. And that obviously, obviously goes down, um, you know, by the time you hit twenty years out, the taxable value is not very high, but we're still talking about a couple hundred thousand dollars in, in taxes paid every year, even as these are fully depreciated.
So, uh, two point six, and if you say thirty percent of that, that's roughly, yeah, it's, it's seven, eight hundred thousand per each. I mean, what I'm trying to do is like a dollars and cents, you're talking, for each of these, you're looking at, even after increment, another three hundred thousand or so a year in tax that isn't rebated.
Uh, ish. Yeah, yeah, so.
Sorry, I'm putting you on the spot there.
No, I'm, I, I have the spreadsheet pulled up. So it's, it's about two hundred thousand dollars that isn't rebated for each project.
Yeah.
Uh, so eight hundred thousand ish total. Um, and then these only have the tax, the a- agency only receives tax increment through the end of twenty thirty-one.
Yeah.
So when the agency stops getting tax increment from these project areas, the batter, the solar panels are very close to fully depreciated, but these battery storage facilities will be only six years old, give or take. So still, still quite a bit of value.
Twenty-year depreciation schedule? Is that?
Yeah, yeah.
Nineteen.
Class sixteen.
Nineteen-year depreciation schedule.
Okay, and are, are each of the, and I'm sorry, I've got a lot of questions. Are, are each of the, each of the projects all on the same schedule as far as years left?
They are.
Under the, okay.
Yes.
All of these, right?
All, all of these four are on the same, the same schedule.
And you said that expires on the, on twenty thirty, at twenty thirty-one?
The, the end of twenty thirty-one, so the agency would make the final incentive payments on these sometime in early twenty thirty-two.
So on the disposal at the end of their lives, would it be the same with the batteries? That you would be responsible for disposing of those?
Uh, that's, that's, that's a county question. That is probably a deep question.
The county did grant conditional use permits on these, and their extended life is beyond the twenty years. Uh, just like the panels are. They're not gonna just replace them just because the, the.
Right, as long as they're still.
They, they will continue those and they will keep them updated and continue to renew and replace components of the cells. and replace components of the cells as are needed, so that they expect thirty five to forty years is what they're saying on those. But they do have a decommissioning and a disposal plan. They have quite a bit of value, residual value for disposal for the lithium ion. There's a place in Texas that we got numbers from that told what they would be worth on today's market. It's pretty substantial. So there's still value there even after they've.
That they won't go into our landfill?
No, they won't know, they would, they would be taken to a recycling center. Right now, the, the one they quoted was in Texas. That was the best prospect. So no, they're, they're not going into our environmental, either not a problem for us.
Yeah, good.
And, and one other benefit to these battery storage projects, solar panels are exempt from sales tax, whereas these battery facilities are not. So these will be taxable sales, the purchase of these. That is a decent amount of sales tax revenue to the county as well upfront.
Nice.
Great.
Well, and I suppose too, the, there's quite a bit of inspection fees that come from building and zoning on, on each of those solar projects. It's, it's one of their bigger.
Yeah.
They're under review right now.
Yeah.
Okay. So do we, do we, have we, have we covered five through nine?
We, we've definitely covered five, six, and seven. Let me, let me finish my enlightening.
Okay.
Yeah, finish your enlightening.
Then you can go to the action items.
We'll take care of it. Boom, 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 boom.
So agenda item number eight is, we'd essentially call these side letter agreements, dealing with the solar project. So these are all, these are all affiliates, these are all Clearway-owned entities. Eight is approving these side letters that are with the solar, the solar entity saying, yeah, we're not taking the tax increment from the battery project, essentially allowing us to split that tax increment revenue stream. So some, the battery portion gets paid to the battery entity, and the, the rest of it gets paid to the existing solar entity. And then finally, number nine, this is dealing with the Iron Springs project. The first three, the battery storage facilities are all within the existing project area, so it doesn't require any boundary change. Just everything on the, sort of on the, on the project area side stays exactly the same. For the Iron County one, the battery facilities will be located just outside of the existing project area. To make that work, we need to either create a new project area just for the battery facilities, or I think the more likely approach from talking to county officials is amend the existing project area to pull in one more parcel where the batteries will be located. So number nine is kicking off that process, what we call a survey area resolution, essentially saying this area needs looked at for either the creation of a new project area or the amendment of an existing project area. And that would then come back for, for the rest of the process, public hearing, plan amendment and whatnot, probably at one of the January meetings, depending on how commission's schedule looks.
And do you anticipate then that the original project area plan would remain the same, you're just amending it for the, for the change in configuration, or change in?
Yeah, essentially, we'd just, we'd just be pulling in another parcel.
So you're not starting the clock over?
Nope.
We're not going to go to these new standards with the, the different requirements?
It would be the same deal, we just have a few more hoops to jump through. And we would also have to go to the taxing entities and essentially get their consent, saying, yeah, your interlocal agreement is now going to cover this additional area. But the, the deal would be exactly the same, just pulling in the battery facilities. Yep.
And then on number eight, the, the letters, basically it's just the agency saying, we agree that the increment's now going to go to two entities. Is that, and then there's going to be?
Yeah, really, really it's the, the solar entities are saying, we, we're not expecting any portion of this tax increment from the battery facilities. Because like I said, if we, if we did nothing, those, those battery facilities would get rolled up under the existing solar agreements. Absent any questions, I don't have anything else before you take action.
I think you're free.
Let's just.
Each one individually?
Each one individually, five through nine.
Okay. I would move for ICCD and RA Resolution twenty twenty four dash three, approving a participation agreement for the Granite Mountain Solar East Solar Community Development Project Area.
Second?
Moved and seconded, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll move, I'll move to approve the ICCD and RA Resolution twenty twenty four dash four, approving a participation agreement for the Granite Mountain Solar West Solar Community Development Project Area.
Second?
Moved and seconded. That one's all in favor for number six.
Aye.
Aye. Number seven?
ICCD and RA, a motion for the Resolution twenty twenty four dash five, approving a participation agreement for the Enterprise Solar Community Development Project Area.
Second?
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great.
I'll move to approve the authorizing the agency to sign acknowledgement letters relating to the new participation agreements for battery storage projects within the Granite Mountain Solar East, Granite Mountain Solar West, and Enterprise Solar Community Development Project Areas.
Second?
Moved and seconded, all in favor on number eight?
Aye.
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 Number nine?
I would move for approval of the ICCD and RA Resolution twenty twenty four dash six, designating a survey area as contemplated by UCA seventeen C dash five dash one oh three, authorizing amendment to the existing Iron, uh, Iron Springs Community Development Project Area.
Second?
Moved and seconded, all in favor on number nine?
Aye.
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 Okay. Done.
Okay.
Done deal.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. We'll reconvene as the Iron County Commission. Move into agenda item number ten, which is review and possible approval of lease contract between Administrative Office of the Courts and the Iron County, and Iron County for office space at the Iron County Justice Center, Fifth District Juvenile Probation Offices. It has Sammy on, but I don't see Sammy.
Speak to that.
Or I can, either one.
Go ahead, Paul.
Yeah.
I just, Chad taught, they're adding another attorney in the office. They need more space. The, the Guardian Adleitem, is that how you pronounce that? Have that space to the east of their office, and they're looking, they don't hardly use it. And so they're, they need more space, so they're looking to take over that, that space.
Area.
Right? Is that about? Sum it up?
Yeah, that makes sense. But so is this, should this be the fifth, so should it read the Fifth District? Well, it wouldn't even be the Fifth District, it'd be the, the State of Utah Guardian Adleitem's office, rather than Fifth District Juvenile Probation Offices? Because those are two separate.
I don't.
Do we have to?
Maybe I said it wrong.
Well, no, because juvenile, because juvenile proba, is, is this, because juvenile probation is across the hall. The Guardian Adleitem's office is kind of.
To the east and on the same side?
On the same side.
It's on the, and it's, it's on the, on the northeast.
It's connecting, yeah, the northeast. So the juvenile probation offices take the suite up across the hall, on the south side of the second story hall.
I think, I think your thinking is right. The, the Administrative Office of the Courts or the AOC is going, going to be the less E. And that is a different entity than Guardian Adleitem, but I believe we were taking Guardian Adleitem out, and then they're going to move the ju, uh, juvenile probation in, into that same office. Is that correct?
Oh, Chad's taking it over.
Chad's, no, the county attorney's office.
County attorney's office taking that over.
Is gonna, we're, yeah, when the Guardian Adleitem is out, we're going to just keep that for expansion for the county attorney's office. So I'm just wondering, I mean, because this is, this may not have anything to do with that.
They've already got a lease on it, and we will le, we will lease it from.
Well, this, because this may not have anything to do with the Guardian Adleitem part. Is this just a renewal of the lease to the Fifth District Juvenile Probation?
Oh, oh, that, that's, maybe this isn't even talking about that.
Yeah.
And I haven't, I'm just reading it literally now.
Oh, well, I thought.
I wonder if maybe we can, do we, do we have any sense of the urgency? Maybe we could bring this back?
Let me call Sam, let me.
Yeah.
Call Sam Wodell.
Sorry.
Oh, no, I'm just.
He said he was out of town, but we could get ahold of him, I guess.
Well, I'll.
They're called Chad.
So maybe this is just the lease for the Fifth District.
I'm thinking this is just probably the renewal of the lease for juvenile probation.
Could you change your mind?
Sammy, you're on public record, don't say anything bad.
Sam doesn't say much that's bad.
Um, hey, just a quick question on the, um, lease for the Fifth District Juvenile Probation?
Yes.
Is, is that just a renewal for that lease? That doesn't have anything to do with the Guardian Adleitem space?
It does. It, it removes the Guardian Adleitem space. The attachment just shows the one side of the office. It removes the other that was there before. There will be a forty-nine hundred dollar reimbursement owed to the state.
So is this, so I guess, and so I guess my question is, on number ten, and let me read number ten to you. It says, review and possible approval of lease contract between Administrative Office of the Court and Iron County for office space at the Iron County Justice Center, and in parentheses, Fifth District Juvenile Probation Offices.
Correct.
It's not the Guardian.
So is that?
So it's, it's an upgraded lease that does not now include that Guardian Adletem space?
Yeah, so are we now renewing the lease with, with juvenile probation, but not renewing the lease on the portion where the Guardian Adletem's office was?
That's correct. The Guardian Adletem will still have access to some office space across the hall, but their office as we know it right now will be no longer part of the lease, and will be available for county use.
And that's the northeast corner that they will no longer use, correct?
That's correct. Northeast corner, the one that directly abuts our office.
Okay.
Yours.
But the motion, the, the motion that we need to make is covered by this.
It's covered.
Correct.
The lease contemplates the difference in square footage that we will, I mean, we just won't be available to them, and a rebate, a refund to them for, for some that they've already paid.
Correct.
Okay.
All right. We're not going to bother you anymore. Thank you for the clarification.
No worries. Let me know if you need anything else. Thanks.
See ya. All right. Makes sense.
So my attorney, yours, Maryland, before.
That's yours.
Okay, I'll, I'll move to approve the lease contract between Administrative Office of the Courts and Iron County for office space at the Iron County Justice Center, Fifth District Juvenile Probation Offices. And just to clarify this further, there'll be a forty-nine hundred dollar rebate to the state, and also this only covers the, the, the office space that is on the northeast corner of the building, and, and directly east of the county attorney's office.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, all in favor on number ten?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Number eleven, review and possible approval of agreement for shared use of Parloin's gravel pit. It also says Sammy, but we'd like to welcome Dan back.
I know, I noticed that he wasn't here, and I didn't know if you gave him back on the phone. If you had any questions.
We've got some rotten vegetables and fruit we can.
Hey, it's par for the course.
We believe that you can probably articulate it.
So we did, obviously, we brought this a while back. How many months ago was that?
Several.
Bruce had some concerns at the time. I remember that kind of being really the only real holdup. And so we've just, we're almost done with engineering and ready to go to.
Since then, I think the plan has changed a lot.
Well, originally, we were asking to just have it donated to us. And, and Bruce, the big revelation in that meeting was, oh no, the gravel pit is far from used up. There's a lot of gravel deeper, and the county plans on continuing to mine this, this pit for a long time to come. And we're like, okay, cool. So let's just work out a, a shared agreement so that allows us to put water in there.
Are we, are we building a dam across it, and you're using part of it, or you're using the whole thing?
So the plan is, we will put in a berm for this small events. But in the spring, in a, in a heavy year.
You'll fill it up?
We'll fill it. But.
But it'll perk before they need it.
It's gravel.
Yes. It'll, it'll perk. In fact, we did, we had, we don't have the official geotechnical report back, but we did actually have a geotechnical engineer go in there. I will share that with you, because that'll actually let you know how deep more gravel you have, rather than just guessing at it. I think, how deep did they go? Do you remember, like thirty feet? I, I said, go as deep as possible that you can, just to, just to find out. Because that helps us know how, how well it's going to perk, and it lets you guys know how much more gravel you have in there. Everything, they said it looked great, but I don't have the actual report yet. So the plan was to build a berm, and so we have a small area that any runoff water can go into. Now, we do have the ability to, actually, as we're designing it, John, could you bring up a parcel viewer?
Rather build, rather than building a berm, you could talk Bruce into mining the gravel where you want to recharge on the other side, and make that deeper, and that forms the berm.
Yeah, then that's your default, first place for it to go. We're actually, the small triangular pit that is just north of the baseball fields, that.
And go into that first.
That Rich helped us build. Yes, we will put all of the water into there.
Never had any standing water in that one.
Water has never made it to the other side. Even in these big events, it, it sinks so fast. And that's going to be our primary place, and we'll actually, we will maintain it and keep it clean so that it perks there. So we'll put all the water we can there first. It's just in a really wet year. Hopefully, we fill the gravel pit. That means that's just that much more water going down in.
And if, if people that are listening to this don't even know, understand what this is all about, will you explain how it comes out of the canyon and where it goes?
Absolutely. So we're about ten years behind what's been done in the Cedar Valley. The idea is that we're artificially recharging the aquifer. They did officially approve the ground, the Parloin Valley Groundwater Management Plan. Here a couple weeks ago, we got, they sent out a thing, said it was official in ninety days, but the letter wasn't dated. Said from the date of this letter, but the letter wasn't dated from the state engineer.
Tell them, don't tell them.
No, they, I'm, they, anyways, they sent a new one, and it had like, the date, like four places on it when they sent it back out. So we're officially under that plan.
Yeah, that's great to have it open.
I know, right? Prove that, prove that that's even valid. Anyways, so that little triangle pit just right above the baseball fields, it, it'll, and what, I think it's like an acre and a half or something like that. We will, we will put all the water we can there. And then whatever we can't, will then go into the other pit. This ultimately gives the county the final say in, in, in all of the interactions in there. It has Parloin, it's a three-way agreement between the pumpers, because the pumpers actually have the water right, and they have to go, they're get, right now in the process, the reason why this had to get done now is because they're filing for the recharge permit from the state. And the state needs to see that they have the right to actually recharge water there, right? The city will be on the hook for maintaining. So if we got to go in and we got to clean the bottom of the, of the gravel pit so that it continues to perk, that'll be on the city's responsibility. And again, the county has the final say. It talks about cooperating for the benefit of the valley and the, all the citizens and all that stuff. But at the end of the day, if there's a, if there's a conflict in the use of the pit, the, the final say is with the county commission, so. And the parties can withdraw as needed, but.
So remind us where the water's, how, how it's going to be routed?
So if you see the triangle, it's going to come right off the, the corner of that triangle, and it's going to follow that red property line down through an old ditch. We're getting an easement from property owner there, Linda Smith, and it's going to divert, it is going to be right there. Now, having said that, I'm wondering who, I'm sure that the county's going to have an, an opinion on the final design of the, of the outlet. Because we've seen some bad outlets into these things.
You're going to need to pipe that down the hill to the bottom.
That's what I'm saying. I know that.
Because it, it will erode really bad.
They originally were thinking that they would just do like a grouted riprap, and I said, let's not even continue this conversation until we get input from the county.
We tried that when we first did the, the Western Rock pit. And we, we thought we'd just run it in a ditch because it was so rocky, it looked like the Grand Canyon the next day. It was unbelievable. And so we put in, we put in a, we had a thirty-six inch pipe, Geneva pipe, and we put a forty-eight inch culvert and cantilevered it out, tried that, but it back cuts so bad, we had to pour a, pour the head wall. That didn't, I mean, it started eroding that, so we, we put over a hundred loads of basalt in that to stabilize it. And it's stable now, but it took a lot of work. Water's a powerful thing. So if you can pipe it down the hill to the bottom, it's, it's, it's way better.
Okay.
If it's, if, I don't, I can't, I don't, how deep is that pit? I don't remember.
I'll bet it's twenty or thirty now.
So that's not near as deep as Western Rock, so it wouldn't be as big a deal to pipe it. Fifty feet, okay.
It's deep.
And obviously, it'll, it'll change. But we, we wanted to make sure, we'll run it by Rich. Wanted to have your input on that.
Four inch? Google Earth says forty feet.
There is a good chance. There is a good chance that we are in an open ditch. Depending on, when we get the bids, when we run out of money on this leg, we will transition from pipe to an open ditch and then put it in pipe. Now, we may have enough money to do the whole thing in pipe.
Is it twenty-four inch?
Yeah, this, this leg is twenty-four. Actually, no, we're probably going to upsize it, um, right about at the fairgrounds, because we're going to take in some, um, that drainage from the fairgrounds. Um, as it drains down along those soccer fields and turns and everything has been a challenge. We're wanting to capture all the, all of the runoff that comes from the, the fairgrounds parking lot and that comes into the fairgrounds parking lot.
That housing subdivision.
So that's a, that's from the subdivision and from all of that, you know, um, the fairgrounds comes into that. So we're probably going to, if we can, if we can, we're probably going to upsize the pipe and do an inlet there. That'll be the only, um, storm water that will make it into the small triangular pit. Depending on what happens with Alex Meisner, um, subdivision. This is going to be potentially a city issue or potentially a county issue, depending on whether the annexation happens. We would probably make him do some sort of oil settling or something like that, if we were to allow that storm drain to come into the storm drain as well, and that's yet to be determined.
Separator, do they make, I guess, probably just use an oil separator?
They have, they use, they use, um, like a double, um, manhole system and a, and a trap to, so that they can separate the oil out and, um.
So can it go into that box culvert that Rich and them put in?
We're actually not going to put that in that box culvert. We're going to continue to use the box culvert the way it is being used now. But, um, as we looked, Alpha Engineers, the engineers designing it, and as they looked at it, they've, they found that it would be better to actually divert off.
Or underneath the road?
We're going to go under the road, we're actually going to, um, we're going to do an open ditch alongside that, the, uh, long side of the triangle. And we're just going to have like a standard on that side, a standard weir system to divert the water in. And if it goes back into a pipe, it'll be after the outlet of that, the emergency outlet.
So everything that goes into our pit will be overflow from the triangle, is that?
Yep. And that, and it'll, will give the, give us the ability to, um, to handle most of the water there, to not impact the county. And that's going to be easier for us to get in and maintain and again.
And how do you anticipate that working in a, in a heavy spring flow? It just, it just flows in and out of the triangle pit and then into the big one?
Yep.
And then it'll, it'll just be inundated until it perks and then?
Yep.
We'll be able to use it again.
And it'll perk so fast, it's not funny, until it reaches a point where there's silt in the bottom that's sealing it off. At that point, we'll need to maintain it, hence the maintenance agreement, so.
And that's contemplated?
The other thing that's contemplated in here is, um, the city will give access. If the county wants to go in, make a bunch of gravel, we, we said that you, you could store the gravel on the county's, on the city's property next to it, if, if that would help.
This parcel?
Mm-hmm. Um, we could store the gravel in the back, um, you could do the same on your parcel that's there to the east.
But even though it silts the bottom, it still perks through the sides and that's how Western Rock is, it perks really good.
We just want to make, like, you know that pit that's right off of, um, that's just north of Sun Rock? That pit is never dry.
Right.
It needs something and it does still perk through the sides, in fact, it's full again now and it's perking through the sides.
That was the first one, that was Steve Platt back in the day.
But, but that pit couldn't be used, you can't get in the bottom of that ever. Year round, there's always some degree of water and it, and it does get to a point where you got to do something.
Well, it needs to be dredged, but they tried once and it got a trickle buried and.
That doesn't go well.
Yeah, the, the operator's yet to be.
Still there.
So anyways, I sent this, um, to Sam, he had a couple of edits, uh, the pumpers had to change a few things. Um, I understand that Sam circulated it within, I told him to send it to Rich, to Bruce, to everybody. He said that there was some edits that came back out, we reviewed them, we were fine with those. And, um, we are where we are, but.
The thing that's exciting about this is, is once you have these, these, some years you may not use it much, but when you do need it, it's there and it's ready.
Yep.
I mean, I think, I think between the Schmidt pit, the Western Rock pit, and, uh, and, and this new city pit, we, we put a twenty-four-inch pipe down on the bottom of the city pit, which filled about half full, but I believe it was two thousand twenty-two, we recharged, um, about ten feet in the aquifer there and then they were thinking the next year would be about seven, so seventeen feet of added aquifer. Now that's spread, it doesn't, you know, it, it spreads out slowly, but, but that's a lot of water.
Well, as a frame of reference, that's what eighty-two, eighty-three and eighty-four did. I mean, that's not across the whole valley, but that's really.
Oh, it's substantial, I mean, when you're talking seventeen feet, that's twice the height of the ceiling, almost.
Yeah.
So that's a lot of water.
Well, I mean, two years ago, the Little Salt Lake, I mean, it's a dry lake. We, we're actually talking with the state right now with our wastewater and we're like, it's a dry lake, because they're making us manage our, um, our outflows as though we're putting it into a river.
Yeah, it's a terminus lake.
Like, it's a dry lake and they said it's, it doesn't look dry to us, well, because we've had two years of good runoff and haven't had any recharge projects. Every gallon that's out there, we'd rather be in, in the aquifer. We haven't had the recharge projects to put it in.
Do you have hay farms, do you have hayfields close to that Little Salt Lake?
We don't.
Because what, what we're doing now is we, we, we put a dam across Quichapah and run the clean into the north side and the dirty into the south and we pump out of the north side and water both of those Jones hayfields and they shut off their wells, so that's, that's a hundred percent recharge right there.
So on the pumpers, um, Jason Bradshaw from Beaver, but he works with, he's the president of the Parowan Pumpers.
And NRCS.
He works for NRCS. This is of course the lowest hanging fruit, but we're going to go on to B and C and D and E of, of these. But yeah, you're right, we should never have any water in the Little Salt Lake.
Right.
It's wasted, it's just like Quichapah in that regard.
Yep.
It's not a, there's no, there's not something we're trying to save by putting water in it, so.
Ready?
Great, yep.
I would move for approval of the agreement for shared use of Parowan, uh, gravel pit.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
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 Hey Paul, this is Lucas Timberage Construction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
I will.
Come back and see us anytime.
Discharge, also I've seen those pipes also fall, like if you use segmented pipe, like once the bottom erodes, then it pulls on it and then they just fall out. But I saw the way you did it with the HDPE and the Schmidt pit.
It's, it sells down that thing, it's so good.
And there's nothing to separate, you know what I mean?
The wells hold and it's, it's awesome, they're going to add one more.
Are they?
They're going to put another twenty-four next to it.
So we'll, we'll reach out when we come to that part of the.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Uh, number twelve, presentation of the twenty-twenty-five tentative budget, our auditor Luke.
Okay, so this is just the tentative budget, there's no public hearing, um, no notice to be made on this. Um, and in state code, this is kind of what it says about it. It says the tentative budget has to be filed with the commission on or before the first day of the next month of the, sorry, on or before the first day of the next to last month of every fiscal period. So by November first, on November first, I sent the tentative budget to each of you, the commission, um, and now we are just adopting that. Uh, there is no public hearing, as I stated, and the budget is not balanced yet. There are still a lot of things that we've been reviewing since November first, um, and that we will continue to, uh, review before the final budget. Um, the public hearing on the final budget will be at the next commission meeting and then the final budget will be adopted in the December meeting. Um, I just wanted to share a few highlights about the tentative budget. But there will be a more in-depth presentation, uh, the next commission meeting when we do the public hearing. Uh, the first thing for today is the truth in taxation, public hearing was on Friday. Uh, this is a property tax increase to the general fund for one-point-two million and this will be voted on at the next commission meeting. Uh, the cost of insurance had a, uh, we had a large increase this year, amounting to about five-hundred thousand. Uh, the stepping grade is included in the tentative budget. Uh, we did have about thirty-two new employee requests or moving employees from part-time to full-time. So that was a big ask this year, um, we are reviewing that, um, and that will be finalized, included with the final budget in the coming weeks. Uh, we've also seen significant increases or requests in operating costs for a few of the departments. Yeah, so we're going to balance the budget in the next few weeks, prioritize what the county needs and then have it ready for the public hearing, the next meeting. So today you're just approving the tentative budget, I mean, it doesn't mean a whole lot, just a part of the process. So, any questions or anything you guys want to add? I mean, you guys know all the details of it, so. Anything you want to add?
So we don't take action on this?
You, yeah, you'll.
We do.
Oh, because it doesn't say, it doesn't say in action.
Okay.
So you just presentation.
So, are we okay, John, where it doesn't say?
You're okay.
Okay. I'll move to approve the presentation of the two thousand twenty-five tentative budget.
Second?
Moved and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Luke. Uh, we'll step out of our role as the Iron County Commission and convene as the Board of Equalization for the review and approval of veterans, circuit breaker, low income and blind tax abatements for the two thousand twenty-four tax year. Also requesting approval for religious, religious and charitable tax exemptions submitted after March, after the March first deadline, presented by Michaela.
So basically I'm just showing you the numbers and total, totals, excuse me, for all of the tax relief that we did for veterans, um, low income and blind persons. The first page that you have there is just a comparison from last year's final numbers to this year's current numbers. Um, all of the circuit breakers have been applied, so that's all accounted for. So that number in yellow will be what we'll be reimbursed for that. I don't know if there's any other questions that you guys have.
Now, when you say reimbursed, do we, does the state reimburse this for this?
Yes.
Okay, all of it?
For the number, this here number.
That's what they reimburse?
That's what we reimburse for.
And Michaela, those are on the, the circuit breakers, right?
Mm-hmm.
The reimbursement?
Yes.
The other abatements, it's just.
We have to take care of those.
Eat that, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Rich, it's a good thing that we are able to help those folks that are.
Well, and after our meeting on Friday night, there was, there were several folks that got up and said, I can't afford this. We said, go get an abatement, and they said, what? And so.
No.
Go visit with Michaela, we, there are programs that can help you.
Yep, for sure.
Yeah.
Thank you for, for what you do on that, it really is. I mean, we've had, we've had some rather poignant discussions with taxpayers this year that ended well.
There are.
Because they ended in your office.
There is definitely a need in our county, maybe not in Canaraville, but.
Well, well, and, you know, I, I wondered even in our meeting on Friday, it might be time to maybe visit with our local legislative, uh, group and just see if maybe the, the income levels might be reconsidered given inflation, um, some folks, like I know that.
Yeah, yeah.
I've got friends that are just a couple hundred dollars off and, you know, yeah.
Those do change every year.
Do they float?
Do they?
Okay.
They reevaluate those through the state.
Well, last year was thirty-eight thousand and this year was forty.
Oh my.
So it did go up a little.
Well, that's good to know.
I've, I've got one friend that that's, I'll tell him to get in and visit with you.
So then I just have this one for you guys to sign, if it's approved.
Okay.
All right, should we get us a motion?
Yeah.
I would move for, uh, approval of the veterans' circuit breaker, low income and, uh, blind tax abatement for the two thousand twenty-four tax year. Also requesting approval of religious and, uh, charitable tax exemptions submitted after March first deadline.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we will step out of our role as the Board of Equalization and back into our role as the Iron County Commission for Personnel Issues.
Hello again.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
What's up for you?
All right, in.
Michaela.
In the Road Department, Trevor Johnson has successfully completed all to order. All right, so also in the Road Department, Michael Averett was selected from the most recent competitive interview and selection process to backfill the vacant full-time road technician one position effective eleven-twelve, twenty-twenty-four. In the Council on Aging Department, Antoinette Roach, or Toni as she goes by, um, was selected from the most recent competitive and interview process to backfill the vacant part-time outreach coordinator position effective eleven-eighteen, twenty-twenty-four. In Sheriff's Office Patrol, Brian Green has successfully completed all tasks and requirements to receive a promotion from a full-time deputy one to a full-time deputy two, beginning November tenth, twenty-twenty-four. In the Sheriff's Office Corrections, Christina Bencomo um, was selected from a competitive interview and selection process to backfill the vacant full-time corrections deputy one position. And we're being a little bit proactive here because she doesn't start until one-nineteen of twenty-five. We're excited to have her, she's come in front with great experience, so that's great. Um, in Corrections, Matthew Malakowski has passed the required testing to receive a bilingual pay stipend effective November tenth, twenty-twenty-four, as outlined by policy. And then Robert Leva was selected from the most recent competitive internal promotion process to receive a promotion from a full-time deputy three to a full-time corporal, beginning November tenth, twenty-twenty-four.
Okay, um, item fourteen, under Personnel, items A through D, I move to approve, as outlined.
I'll second that?
Moved and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect, thanks.
Done. Do we have any closed session? I'm not aware of any.
Nice.
Lucas wanted to meet with us for a minute.
Yeah.
Close session or?
Just, just budget stuff.
Just afterward, yeah.
Any county board issues?
I don't know of any.
So I'll try and, I'll try and, uh, get some, uh, for our next few meetings so that we can kind of go into, first of the year caught up and go through them a little bit.
All right, well, uh, thank you everybody for coming out today. Chair will declare the meeting adjourned, thank you.